I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Thank you.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Here. There will be a motion this evening to move items 6A and 6B to Seventh Order for final vote. These are the city's rental property code and the contractor licensing ordinances, respectively. Anyone who would like to speak on these pieces of legislation may do so in Fourth Order during citizens' participation.
Third Order, 3A. Minutes of the--
Hold on one second, Mr. Waldenberg.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table, file of Council Number 33 of 2022.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table, file of Council Number 33 of 2022. This piece of legislation is being taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for a final vote. It is the adoption of the general city operating budget for 2023. Anyone on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A. Minutes of the Historic Architectural Review Board Meeting held October 20th, 2022. 3B. Correspondence received from OCD ARPA Director dated November 22nd, 2022 regarding wellness grants, public health, interdepartmental budget transfer. 3C. Minutes of the Scranton-Lacawanna Health and Welfare Authority Meeting held June 16th, 2022. 3D. Correspondence received November 22nd, 2022 from OECD regarding code enforcement report for City Council. 3E. Amendments to the City of Scranton, 2023, General Operating Budget.
Are there any comments on any of the Third Order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have two. One, just to let everyone know that DPW is back on schedule this week with garbage pickup, and also that there's going to be a public meeting tomorrow night at Howard Gardner School on East Elm Street to discuss the stormwater study, and that will be held at 6:00 PM at the Howard Gardner School on East Elm Street tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
I have one. So, the Scranton Police Department will be having a toy drive fundraiser this Friday, December 2nd, 5:00 PM at the Lace Works Tap and Grill, 524 Court Street, Scranton, PA, and music by DJ Danny K. I think we all know who he is. He does a great job. So, please bring a new unwrapped toy. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements?
Yes, I have one. So, this weekend will be First Friday. Also, starting off on First Friday downtown Scranton will be the Lacawanna Winter Market. So, if you didn't have a chance to maybe go to some places on Saturday for Small Business Saturday, now's your chance where you'll get to shop local vendors at the winter market. That'll be happening this weekend, Friday night, from 5:00 to 9:00, along with the tree lighting at 8:00. And then Saturday from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any announcements? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
First on the list this evening is Joan Hodawanitz.
First, Kyle, I want to thank you for your service as a councilman and wish you luck as you move into your role as a state legislator. Just remember where you come from and who you owe us.
Absolutely.
Keep us in mind.
Thank you, Joan.
I looked at the city's website again this morning, and there really isn't any change. Still no updated DPW contract posted, no updated controller reports, no updated city audits, so hopefully they're working on that on some kind of basis. Speaking of audits, what is the status of the 2021 audit?
I think the last update we got was to expect it the first or second week of January.
Okay, so we're still looking at January. All right. Apparently, there was a hearing today for the lawsuit, the COLA lawsuit. Does anyone know what the outcome of that hearing was today? Are they still, like, taking it under advisement?
I don't think council has gotten any update on that. That's in regards to the--
The back date of COLA from the police association?
Yes, for the retirees. Correct. Yes.
Okay. I mention it because we don't have the 2021 audit, and one of the things that should be in an audit is risks to the city, especially litigation. And, of course, the last posted audit is 2018, and there are no risks associated with litigation. This lawsuit predates that, but I often wonder, you know, what would happen if the police association wins that lawsuit? That's going to have a significant impact on back pay in terms of COLA, but we shall What is the status of the police and fire union contracts?
It's my understanding they're still being negotiated.
Okay. With regard to the amended budget, I took a look at it. I noticed that with the changes made in the amendments, there's a reduction of $192,719.48 in the city's budget. That's just a .2% reduction, so the amendments haven't taken it down very much. But oddly enough, there were several salaries which were decreased from the original proposal, but there were two that were increased. One, of course, is Frank Waldenberg, the city clerk, but Frank, don't spend it all in one place because it's only $854, and after taxes, it's about $2 a day. The other one, and you're a non-union position, the other one in DPW in the garages, the auto repairman who got an additional $2,788.70. My question is, since that union contract is settled, why did only one union member get a pay raise?
So, that was miscalculated. The prob-- it gets a little confusing when you get into garages because half of them are DPW union employees, half of them are clerical union employees.
No, this is not clerical. This is DPW.
No, I-- no, but so the auto repairman is a DPW union employee.
Yes.
They got-- the original calculation was a clerical union raise, so that's why that increased there because they had to do the DPW calculation for those two positions for the auto repairman. But then there was a motor vehicle repair and a mechanic that got the DPW raise but are actually in the clerical union.
But they're clerical.
So, that's what those adjustments were there.
Okay.
Because the auto repairman, there are two, right? So, that's where it was confusing, two out for the other two.
I don't know that there were two. I think there's only one.
No, there's two because it's 103,000.
Okay. Moving on, your total personnel of 507, I count 505 because you eliminated the position in the fire department and a position in parks and rec, so it should be 505. But why, under employee salary breakdown, is OECD counted for salary and personnel in 2022 and not in 2023?
Because we only-- I was only explaining the amendments, and we only amended what is in the general fund, the general funds, and most of OECD is paid out of non-general fund money.
Why was it included in 2022?
Because there was a different breakdown of where that money was coming from in 2022. That was a change that wasn't present in 2023.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the list, Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan, I'm sure the council members individually are aware that I extended an invitation when the time is available to allow the council members to come along with the recreational authority at Naught Park and the mayor, and I didn't invite the city controller yet, but I'd like to have a discussion, starting off with what happened at Naught Park and the pool complex and the slide, and just follow the chain of events or possession in regards to the whole fiasco that's going on up there. I think the residents have a right to be informed on how their government's functioning or whether their government is functioning. I'm fairly troubled by a lot of things I see this council doing, and there's really a lot more need for transparency, and there's a greater need for the residents to have an understanding about what's happening in the budget, where the money's coming from, where it's going, because after a city has been in Act 47 for 30 years and then decide it's going to create an authority and fund raises and do demolition work at Naught Park, and then the last thing I heard is, "We don't even allegedly have money to build a pool there." So, I think the residents have a right to ask how the council ever came to the conclusion that it was in the best interest of the city to demolish the pool itself, considering there were remedies to the leakage that the pool was suffering under. And if the city didn't have the money to build the pools or a pool, then why wasn't that remedy used to solve the problem? And, you know, we live in a city that's been in decline for my whole life, and, you know, you watch these council meetings and you just watch the destruction now of the Scranton School District. We live in a city with no preschool program, and we're talking about closing elementary schools, and we're putting the school district in this city in the same peril that Act 47 did to the city itself because the answer to insolvency by the city may have been to dissolve the city itself, okay, and then let the county run it because with all the shenanigans we've suffered under, the sale of the golf course with Scranton's municipal golf course, where the city never spent one dime to build that golf course, never paid one bond payment to build that golf course, but yet they sold it. A gentleman from Scranton put that all together, not the city of Scranton. And when you take a look at the Scranton Sewer Authority and the parking garages, we had a mayor that forced the city into Act 47 when he took office. Remember Jimmy Connors was the mayor when the ball start rolling, and Chris Dougherty start talking about how we should go into Act 47, and then he proceeded to build parking garages and knew the city could never pay for them. I mean, there has to be a situation where we move away from this five-minute timeline, sit the council members at a seat here, and start listening to facts and figures and have information because these five-minute little dalliances into make-believe don't inform the residents of anything. And for anyone to consider themselves a leader in any shape or form after what this city suffered through for 30 years and the closure of elementary schools and no preschool and the blight this city's suffering under, don't forget, the Hill Neighborhood Association sold their building, and they're not the only ones. So, the neighborhood associations are in a full rollback, and this city is falling apart, and this council burdened, hold some of the burden. I asked the mayor to come and at a table and sit down. She wanted to talk to me about where she lived. I'm not interested in where she lived. That's up to the council to determine that, and they don't want to do it because the council has a right to do investigations, but they don't want to do those either. So, before this city went into distress for all these decades, the city should have been doing investigations, and the Scranton Times should have an investigative reporter, and they should be investigating things so we don't have to suffer anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Ron Elman.
Kyle, I wish you the best on your new position, and I hope you remember the little people in Scranton when you're down there, and I hope I wasn't your worst nightmare this year.
Well, I almost made it through my entire tenure here without getting subpoenaed until yesterday when I was subpoenaed to appear, you know, as a witness on your behalf in your fight against the Quality of Life ticket, so thanks for that.
Last year, I had a man tell me at the grocery store, "I'm a ticking time bomb in here," and that's not true. I'm just an irritable taxpayer. When you mess with my pocketbook, it makes me irritable. Because of incompetence in the different departments throughout the city, everybody's pocketbook been messed with. You know, the taxes are three times what they used to be, and they're going to skyrocket with the big lie about reassessment. A week or so ago, three big companies, WNEP and Glanmore, they asked and received their attorneys oppose their tax base. You know, these are wealthy businesses. WNEP got a million-dollar reduction in taxes. This is outrageous. In Glanmore, there's another one. From a million, it was reduced to 98,000. This was in the paper. This is where I got these figures. Another one of these greedy companies, from 800,000 to 250,000. This is a preview of what's going to happen after reassessment, and the little man won't have any protection. These people already have attorneys. You don't have, you know, if I wanted to oppose my new reassessment, I'd have to hire someone. Oh, well, too much apathy and indifference in this city, I guess, about the school-closing dilemma. I think too many people think of this as a social thing, a neighborhood school. I went to neighborhood schools where you could walk all my life growing up through high school. I'm certainly for neighborhood schools, but these three schools in particular have-- they've reached the point where their acceptability is gone. They're just-- they need too much money spent on them. I think it said 27 million the next few years. They don't have the attendance anymore, and it's just time, whether it hurts some people or not, to close these three schools. I walked a school maybe, I don't know, less than a half a mile each way. There weren't any school buses when I was growing up in Memphis. You took a city bus. Now, right at the corner of my house on Wells Street, into the street, the speeding cars hit 60, 80 miles an hour 24/7. It's like a racetrack. I've seen them go around the school bus in the morning, and Wells is the stop for school buses in the afternoon also. A speeding car went through the fence there about a month ago, right where the children were standing. This was in the afternoon. Nobody was there. Nothing has been done for years about the speeding cars except it got worse and worse and worse every year, especially at night, and it's not a police problem. The police-- I see policing now and then, that everybody slows down. They need to unmark cars, I guess. Mr. -- oh, I forgot his name. The gentleman got slaughtered across the Minnie Cozy. Got slaughtered in front of my house by a speeding car. In the paper, I was there. I know what happened all day long. This is a shame. A speeding car slaughtered this man and stopped more than 150 feet up the street, and the poor guy, he was dead on the pavement. The woman got out, and she's looking at her car. The paper said no charges.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Well, something needs to be done. Like I said, I wish you the best on your new endeavor. Remember us here.
Absolutely. Thank you. That exhaust sign-in sheet for this evening, would anyone else like to address council?
Tom Coyne, Menucha. Last session I was in here, I asked specifically about the special session, the executive session that was held. We were told that the executive session was held for personnel matters. Do we have any update on that to give a clarity of what that session actually was? No. Is there some reason why we are not following the Sunshine Act for that, or it says, and when the courts have said, "That is not specific enough and gives the citizens enough information so they can make a decision on whether or not an executive session is valid and legitimate"? That's something that the citizens have a right to know so that they do not-- so we do not assume that everything happening in the back doors under special executive sessions are actually not executive sessions. It's just hush sessions that the public is not privy to. The Sunshine Act is direct on how that is to be addressed, and I don't understand what the resistance is to following that law. Moving on, moving on, first of all, I also want to say, Kyle, congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck. Moving on, I'm also concerned about the rush to vote in this session. It's obviously-- it's obvious that this got pushed forward for the rental and for the job position because you're leaving that seat, and it needs to be a three-to-two vote so that you get that passed. I think that rushing it forward as an emergency says a lot about things. It says, "We don't follow procedures. When we have to get something done, we cut corners. We skip council rules, and we jump through hoops." Looking back at this, when it first came up before this body, it was voted on, and one of them was put to be tabled. That was struck down that it was tabled, and then it failed introduction, but somehow it appeared next week on the Eighth Order. The Eighth Order is where tabled items go, which it was actually voted down for being tabled. Mr. Schuster actually wanted it tabled, and that was voted against. The normal procedure for council is when something fails the vote, in the next executive session, there is a vote before this body, a public vote, to reintroduce that, but that doesn't seem to have happened. It suddenly appeared in Eighth Order without a public vote to reintroduce it, to sneak it in as if it was tabled rather than struck down as it was. Proper process is reintroducing it and then letting it go through the entire body, but I understand there was a rush to get this through the system, to have the rental contract done, to have this appointment put in place, and it seems that council regulations and rules need to be ignored when it's inconvenient. Both of these actions that are moved forward tonight are in peril of being struck down. I would advise council when they reconvene afterwards to bring it up for a revote again and see if it survives, if it passes this time, because that's what happened in this body last time. Something failed was it was pulled back up for a revote in the next session, and at that time, maybe we'll be back to a voting position that's not impacted. I have serious concerns with the council ignoring proper processes because anything in this is rife for a legal challenge. You have violated the process of city councils' regulations. By doing so, it allows any of this to be challenged by any citizen. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council?
Dave Dawson, resident and taxpayer. I'm switching around here a little bit. Congratulations again. We're going to miss you, Kyle. Now, I have a little assignment for you when you get to the legislature. It's on our 38% tax-exempt institutions in the city, and something really needs to be done. It's gone up and up year after year. We were down at 33% from 35. Now, it's up to 38%, and one of the ideas I have for future council would be to get in touch with these institutions and sit down and talk with them and have them help us in Harrisburg to actually call attention to this and the need for the state to come in and kick in replacement due to their financial replacements due to their constitution. We can't tax them. We can only ask for the pilot, and they can say no, and many of them have. Many of them wouldn't consider it, and the ones that do want to direct the money, so that's really not much of a help. So, enough said on that. I'll be here to test the other council members on that. And another thing on tensions, that FTX Bitcoin company or crypto coin company went bankrupt overnight. It was over $30 billion in value, and it seems like a lot of the money was pilfered and totally irresponsibly spent. They had $250 million dumped into lobbyists in Washington and our financial services panels, and they didn't want regulation to come into play of these. And they didn't want regulation to come into play of these. Well, my concern is that our pension losses could be related to cryptocurrency. It came to my attention that a lot of pension plans and investment have been just handing over money for a basket of investment. And the good investments are basically protecting these pyramid clubs, that's all they are. We should be invested in power generation or things like that that are definitely gonna pay back in the future. We don't need this. And then, well, you're about to pass the budget. It is what it is, we've had enough time. Be helpful if we get a, get the audit in sometime, even if it's two or three months late. And then on voting, I made a comment last week that the younger generation saves social security for the older generation. And I did a good thing for themselves because you wouldn't believe the family fights that erupts when Fox News comes on and your parents are in their seventies. I had a, you know, Fox News time about a half hour before. I always had the poor doggy had to go home and be fed. I had to go home and feed the doggy, you know? Fox News would come on and turn a good day into mush. And our ex-president sat down last weekend at the table with a white Christian nationalist and he's calling for an American Taliban. So maybe we'll get lucky someday and instead of shooting people in a bar or something like that, because of who they are, somebody will turn him in, volunteer him for Switch Keys Factory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Good evening, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I decided to get up and speak and to voice my concern about the proper procedure for city council. And I think that's why we have our solicitor here, to make sure that city council follows the rules and regulations, to keep us out of trouble, to make sure that we're following the rules. If we were violating things for the conduct of council, I'm sure Mr. Gallagher would be the first one to jump in and to let us know that things were not being followed. So every time that's mentioned, I sort of think, you know, that's why we have a solicitor here, to keep us on track. Number two, I was thinking about, I was thinking about this all week and wondering if council ever goes out to the public. Do we ever have the forums that go to the neighborhoods to listen to the people out in the neighborhoods? They don't come here, so we have to go to them to listen to what do the neighbors have to say? What do the citizens of Scranton have to say? When I go to the grocery store, believe me, I get an earful. And I know that you probably get an earful and you're someone that can do something about it. I can't. All I can do is listen and then come up here and something that hits my hot button. I went back and I checked on the street signs. I've been talking about the street signs for four years. And at first it was because they didn't have enough personnel to do the work. And I did go down to DPW and every now and then, you know how your cell phone is, that picture pops up on my cell phone when I was down there to DPW to see how it works and how it functions. And then when they show me the database, there's nine thousand street signs and stop signs that need to be replaced. I haven't seen any or heard anything and thank you, you know, council does try to get us an update, but I don't hear anything coming through as an update as to what is going on with the street signs. I also thought about the day I got a phone call at my home and I, I'm sorry I didn't write the person's name down, but it was a reporter. And I guess a grant had been, had been given and signed off and there was money that was available for the street signs. And he knew that I had been a champion trying to get the street signs and asked me, how did I feel, did I know this? I didn't. And, you know, I was just thrilled that I heard that, but nothing ever happened as far as I can see or where that money went to that was allocated for street signs. So, you know, we sit here and we stand and we give our concerns, but that's only a few of us that are representing different parts of the city. And I just, was just wondering if you could give that some thought for 2023, just start going out to the people of Scranton and making sure that they know and you hear from them rather than just a few of us here.
Thank you, Norma. So I know, you know, I know I've tried to get to as many neighborhood meetings as possible, but in terms of council going out into different neighborhoods, the complication with that is the live, live stream we have onto YouTube and onto ECTV, that we wouldn't be able to hold council meetings in different places and also have them livestreamed.
Yeah.
With the street signs, I know the grant has been exhausted in terms of the signs that have gone up. There has been some progress on that. We are applying for another grant for next year to continue, you know, there what, like you said, there was a lot of street signs in that database, right? So there took, there was a chunk taken out of it, but there's still a lot of work to be done and there, there is a grant being applied for to continue to do that.
I don't see any new, of course, I don't ride around the city all the time looking for street signs, but it just doesn't seem like there's any kind of improvement, especially in Southside, Westside, well, it's all over the city.
Yes.
No matter where you go, the street.
I think it was Southside and Westside where the initial grant money was concentrated and then, you know, moving around in a counterclockwise circle.
Okay, I don't know if that's.
But that's.
You know, it just needs about four years of trying to get street signs.
Yes.
You know, if that's.
That was, that was just the update I got last week on the street signs and the grant.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Marie Schumacher. I must say, I was pretty disappointed in, in the amended budget. It was, it's very hard when you put out a document in November that has actuals through August. Certainly, the actuals through October could have been there and you could judge a little bit better where, if we're gonna make it. There were actually seventy, over seventy items that had zero funding, zero money spent through August. Why?
Some of those expenses are late in the year expenses.
Seventy, over seventy? I don't think so.
Some of them are.
Yeah, well, I, I understand that, but I don't, I don't think that it really would have helped to have up to date, up to dates. And where in the, in that budget is the current balance from the Scranton Sewer Authority escrow account?
So that's still in the escrow account? There's still, I believe there's a few of the easements they're still trying to satisfy there. And then once that comes over, we'll create a special, I'm assuming council will create a special account to receive that money. Whatever's left over in the escrow account.
Well, what is the current balance?
I don't know it off the top of my head. I believe it was in the four million dollar range a couple of months ago, but I'll ask for Frank to get a update on the current balance in that escrow account.
Okay, thank you. I hope next year is a better year, let me just say that, thank you. Are you, you're quitting tonight now? I mean, you're not, no more meetings?
I'm not quitting.
No, 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 no.
I'm not quitting.
I didn't say you personally.
Oh, no, no, council's still meeting into December.
Into December?
Yes.
So the budget is still going to be voted on tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Hello, it's good to speak to you all tonight. I'm here because I have a few questions.
Could you just state your name and?
Oh, name.
For the record.
Angelo Jarman, J-A-R-M-A-N. I'm coming here because I have a few questions on behalf of a relative of mine who's looking to convert an outbuilding on their property in Scranton into a residence and they're not, we were trying to look through on the, on the city website about the different permits and everything that may be required, but we weren't able to find much information. And we were wondering who would be the best people to contact or departments in the city to contact regarding that?
So, so what is it? It's an accessory unit, basically?
It was originally built, it was built like early twentieth century. It was like a garage first floor and then like a sort of office space on the second floor. Has some utilities hooked up to it, but not metered separately and we're not sure where that lies legally with the current, with all the current zoning requirements and permitting requirements.
So I'd probably start with code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
In terms of permitting. You could also check with the city zoning officer to make sure that, you know, anything you're doing meets proper setbacks and such. And that it's permitted use in that zone.
Yeah, because I know there's like some, there's like different rules compared to like if you have an existing structure versus trying to build a new one from the ground up.
Yes.
And all that stuff, so just want to make sure everything's flush, you know?
The city zoning officer would probably be the best person to start with there.
Does that require an appointment or is it just open?
No, you could call and leave a message.
Call and leave a message then, okay. All right, as far as that goes, that's about it. The only other thing, I do recall some of the other people speaking tonight about Scranton School District and some of the school closures in our city. I do believe I mentioned a few weeks back when I was here that I, at one point went to Audubon Elementary and I was a student there at the time that it was closed down. And it is very disheartening to see the city once again deciding to close down multiple elementary schools despite the fact that many of these students, like all of our schools are at capacity. During that time when Audubon was shut down, I was actually part of the half of my school that was sent to John J. Adams Elementary where I was, where me and my peers were made to learn, crammed all together in a basement classroom about, about the size of the seating area here. Imagine around fifty fifth graders all crammed together with two teachers trying to teach all of them. Needless to say, it wasn't a very good environment to learn in and I'm very concerned about the impact that the closure of these schools will have on, on students in Scranton. I know that I was fortunate enough to continue on with school and eventually graduate and not all of my peers were so lucky having their education interrupted in that way. So I'm no policy master or policy genius, but I do think that it's in the best interest of the city of Scranton to do what it takes to keep these schools open, to keep these schools maintained and staffed properly. And if that means like, hey, maybe, maybe we'll pay like a fifth of a percent more in property taxes or we do fundraisers or we need to just rearrange the way that things are organized, whatever it takes, just making sure that students are able to stay in school and have the resources they need is important if we're going to, long term, continue to have the city function. But that, that's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel?
Hi, I'm Ripplinl from Scranton. I'd like to talk to you about my concerns about Scranton Housing Authority, specifically the thing that's been on the menu for seven D about a Kelly Murray to be the new Board of Commissioner person. I applied for that. My problem was, I live in Scranton Housing Authority Adams High Rise, I've lived there since two thousand nine. And looking back on it, I had no choice. It's the only place I can live. If I'm out of there, I'm gone. And realistically, it's been constructive eviction, the word in the law, constructive eviction, right from the beginning. They come to your door, they put scraps of paper unsigned by anybody, you know, that, that you have to do these things or you're gonna be charged two hundred and fifty dollars like this one, or, or, you do not need to be home. They are permitted to enter in order to complete any work. Thank you for your understanding management. This is out of control. During COVID, they were doing, they had, you know, what they say, two fires. In fact, the fire alarm went off every week for, for the first ten years I was there. Then they have water damage and then they do construction and they have another fire, more water damage. They have to go to the Scranton Fire Department to shut off the sprinklers, they stay on for forty-five minutes and then they go to their insurance company and they have all these people come in. I don't know who they are, they're vendors. So I tried to figure out how, who they are. So I did a right to know with the city of Scranton and they, they sent me the name of the right to know officer for Scranton Housing Authority. And so I did the right to know and he gave me a paltry answer under the gun after he wait, I gave him extension after extension. Goes for like four months total between Scranton, City Hall and, and this place. And now they've hired a lawyer. I had to appeal it because they've hired a lawyer, Scanlon Howley and Dority, to handle the appeal. And, you know, it's sickening. They, they said I was harassing them. I've been trying to find out for eight years who, who runs, who's doing this. Because they just burst in my door anytime, they burst in my door with the Lackawanna County sheriffs and I lose my kid in family court in New York State because of this one guy and I complained to them, I talked to them, you know? And these maintenance guys, they're like thugs and they're run by the main thug who is their lawyer, who is also the district attorney, assistant district attorney. And, you know, I read in Times Tribune and I, I call Kuhot from the Times Tribune about this abuse that has been going on, he's stopped taking my calls. And, you know, they published my social security number and they forged my name on, on two HUD documents. And, you know, and I'm trying to do the best I can. I learned a little bit of law from the Kings County Family Court in New York, but to survive, I have to stay here. And they've just evicted, and the final judgment from the right to know came through on November fourteenth and it says thirty days, you have to tell, you have to tell the full names of who works there, when they went there, going back to two thousand, two thousand nine. I, in my lease, it says, you know, if, if something happens, call the police. And I'm getting a lot of flak from the district attorney guy, Coyne, to, you know, you called the police on my staff and in, in the lease is, it's like, you're not getting along with the staff. It, it just goes on and on. But I, I wanna try to fix it from the inside and I don't have much time left, but I want to be on the Board of Commissioners for this place because I will not survive otherwise and a lot of other people will be hurt very badly if something doesn't change here.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I have one or two. I just wanted to respond to something that Ms. Jeffries had, had brought up. She had asked council members if, if we go out in the neighborhood. up. She had asked council members if, if we go out in the neighborhoods or in the communities. And I know that, that I have in the past and I consider myself to be an active member of the community and being in the Hill section too. However, meetings, like neighborhood meetings are difficult with, if they're, if they're held on a Tuesday night when we have council meetings or other evenings. I'm often working my other job pretty late, but I have found it very useful in the past to go to those meetings and to hear directly from, from people there in the neighborhoods. And certainly something that I'd like to be able to do more of. And I did just want to mention something that I was working to set up prior to the pandemic. When I had first come onto council, one of my goals was to set up another venue in addition to our city council meetings when we could hear out the public. And so I had an idea for town halls in different sections of the city along with not just city council, but with other city elected officials to have like a joint town hall with, with the mayor and with some of the school board members. And so that was something, like I said, I was working on prior to the pandemic and unfortunately the pandemic made that, made that impossible to do. But now being out of the pandemic, that I think that's something that we can consider again and start to work together with, like I said, other elected officials who would be interested in, in doing that and just being able to hear people out and for us all to be in one place where, where we could, where we could discuss what, what matters most to, to the residents of Scranton. And the other thing that I was hearing a bit more of tonight were things in reference to the Scranton School District and to the school board. And so I don't know if the speakers coming here with those comments are also going to the school board meetings, but if not, then I would encourage you to do that as well because I think it's important for them to hear from you about your thoughts about the school district in addition to council. I, I also appreciate hearing, hearing thoughts during citizen participation about that, but they do have a meeting tomorrow night that'll be at, at 6:30. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a quick one. So this is a reoccurring concern that I've been receiving complaints for, Jesus, I don't know, most of the summer and now with winter coming and it's Western Fields Pool. All right. And these issues are not only from taxpayers, but, but they're customers. They're, they're taxpayers and they're paying to be there and, and use this facility as recreation, as therapy. And, and they keep reaching out to me because I, I bring it forward, but it doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere. So they said the entire month of November, the pool was open four days. Two days, out of them, two, two out of the four days, the water was freezing. The morning classes had to, had to leave. And then the water company or, yeah, the electric company had been there twice because they couldn't regulate the thermostat for, for, for the pool area or the pool. No one is checking the temperature of the pool, see if the heater is working. And they said they've never seen so many issues with lifeguards and they've been there for years. And they posed another question. They said, where were the, where are the two full-time lifeguards that were there? They were fired, they believe, and they'd like to know why. So I hate, you know, keep bringing this up, but I feel I have to until there's some type of resolve. So Mr. Waldenberg, could you please send these concerns over to the Parks Director and please get us an update by next week?
I will, sir.
And secondly, it's, it's, it's no secret that this is Kyle's last meeting. And I, it was a true honor and pleasure to serve with him on the Scranton School Board and sit alongside with him and serve him on council for almost four years. I wish you the best of luck in Harrisburg and the best of luck with your beautiful family.
Thank you, Mark.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to save my comments for agenda items and also for the end of the meeting. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction, an ordinance amending file to council number 100, 1976 entitled, an ordinance as amended levying general and special taxes for the fiscal year 1977 by setting for millage for the year 2023 and shall, and same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second.
Is that a motion?
It was a motion.
You got to move it. So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, it was discussed in caucus tonight. This introduction here, this ordinance that's being introduced here does contain the 3% tax increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it can be amended as we move forward before a final passage?
Yes. Is there?
That's all.
Anyone else, anyone else on the question?
Yeah, on the question. So during the whole budget process, I stated that I would not be in favor of a tax increase. Whether this, it's 3% in here or it's going to be amended later to 2, I'm not in favor for a couple of reasons. First of all, whether it's 3% or 2%, 10 minutes from now, when, when we go through the amended budget, it's still being levied to pay for increases in new positions. And the American Rescue Plan money, the early pieces were targeted for lost revenue. So I don't believe in raising taxes when we're not using the ARPA money for lost revenue. So my position hasn't changed on a tax increase, so I'll be voting no.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, an ordinance amending file to council number 11, 1976 entitled, an ordinance as amended enacting imposing a tax for general revenue purposes in the amount of 2% on earned income and net profits on persons, individuals, associations and businesses who are residents of the city of Scranton or non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed or business conducted within the city of Scranton, requiring the filing of returns by taxpayers subject to the tax, requiring employers to collect the tax at source, providing for the administration, collection and enforcement of the said tax and imposing penalties for the violations by reenacting the imposition of the wage tax at 2 and 4 tenths percent on earned income for residents and 1% on earned income for non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed or business conducted within the city of Scranton for the year 2023 and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction, an ordinance amending file to council number 6, 1976 entitled, an ordinance as amended imposing a tax for general revenue purposes on the transfer of real property situated within the city of Scranton prescribing and regulating the method of evidencing the payment of such tax, conferring powers and imposing duties upon certain persons and providing penalties by imposing the rate of the realty transfer tax at 2 and 10 tenths percent for calendar year 2023 and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction, an ordinance, an ordinance for the general revenue of imposing a payroll tax on the amount of payroll expense generated as a result of a business conducting business activity within the city and to be levied at a rate of 0.2787%, requiring registration and payment of the tax as conditioned to the conducting of such business, providing for the levy and collection of such tax, prescribing such requirements for returns and records, conferring powers and duties upon the tax collector and imposing penalties for 2023.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the U.S. Department of Transportation's Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program for up to $180,000 to be used as a planning grant towards the connectivity plan from South Scranton to downtown Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Department of Community and Economic Development for the COVID-19 ARPA H2O PA Water Supply Sanitary Sewer and Stormwater Program for up to $20 million to be used towards various stormwater projects.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 36, 2022, an ordinance enacting the rental ordinance of 2022 by repealing and replacing the city's rental property code.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that six, item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know that there's a motion that's going to come up to make to, well, never mind, I'll save it for that.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file to council number 38, 2022, an ordinance amending the contractor licensing requirements and related provisions.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move items 6A and 6B to seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'd like to move this motion, make a motion to postpone consideration of this for two separate reasons. One was I'd like to wait for the budget to pass before we look at these because I first mentioned my concern that, but there was positions that were included in the budget that wasn't yet passed in this. And also I'd like to get, I'd like to see if the law department can give us an opinion in writing as to the 2015 lawsuit so we know that we're not getting into those same waters. So if I could have a second to postpone consideration.
I'll second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. On the question?
On the question, I think during caucus you had indicated that Attorney Cotillo had given us an answer on that.
I talked to Attorney Cotillo today and there was a sunset on the lawsuit that was filed and even if there wasn't, the rates are still, so the lawsuit was based on the fact of what we were charging for a permit compared to what it cost the city to administer that program. So there was a settlement made, the rates were lowered. Those rates, the rates that we have in our ordinance now are actually lower than the rates of the settlement. But at the same time, we are also increasing our spend on, on that program. So I believe that's, that issue's moot there. At the same time, I think it's, you know, I do think it's important to start holding irresponsible landlords and property owners responsible for not taking proper care of their properties and for, you know, basically that are, it's basically resulting in decimating some of our neighborhoods. And I know that it's been a complaint, you know, for my five years on council and it goes even farther back than that. So I think it's time that we actually do start holding these landlords accountable.
And I think it goes to benefit, it benefits those responsible landlords to live here in the city and, and those some that maybe don't live in the city, but they're responsible and they take care of their properties and they, they take it serious. Whereas there's others which have been published in newspapers, some quite a bit where they just bought these properties, did nothing to them, didn't repair them. They're in broken down conditions and they were just left to rot to the point where the city had to tear them down. So I, I think that this will truly help those responsible landlords in the city.
So I just want to say I, I am in agreement with Mr. Dunhu and Mr. King. I do think we need to, to hold these landlords responsible. As I stated from the beginning, mine is more procedural. I don't want to end up voting no on this due to procedural issues. You know what I mean? I would rather wait the process out. So I'm just asking right now if we could just postpone the consideration so we could just get it through sixth order into seventh order and get that opinion from the law department in writing.
I agree. So of course I agree that we, we need to help hold landlords, especially the out of town ones that have, who've been, you know, haven't been, haven't treated, you know, our city and, and our rules well. But the settlement that we spoke of in caucus, I still had a concern. I understand, I understood the fee part, but somewhere I read, I just want clarity. I can wait a week, but I thought it had more to do with the inspection process and what's warranted about when you can go in or not. Or I would just like clarity as, as to legally, what, what would the code enforcement officers be allowed to and when to do their inspections? I know they want to be every five years or whatever, but it kind of read to where they can maybe go in more than once. Based on what? I don't know. Based on an assumption? Based, I just want to make sure we get this legally right. I, I'm not pausing this for the out of town landlords in, in any way.
On the question, I, I don't share the same concerns about this legislation. I, I believe that Councilman Dunhu did receive an answer on the, the legal concerns with it. And we've also received answers previously that it's not going to be automatically adding more rental officers like what's in the budget. That'll be a separate vote for later as part of, as part of the, the budget, final budget vote. However, this is, I've been a big proponent of this legislation and changes to our rental ordinance. As it stands now, our rental ordinance does not have much teeth to it and it's really handcuffed our employees and our officers in terms of what they can, what they can do to ensure that people who are renting within the city are safe in the buildings that they're living in. And that's a huge priority for me. I also think this is going to have a big impact on blight within our city, which has also been a, a large priority for, for myself since I've been on council, something that I've spoken to very often. And I think that with this legislation, we'll be able to better get that, that blight in check, have a better idea of the, the rentals within the city, get more of those properties registered. And so I'm, I feel prepared to vote for this ordinance this evening.
Anyone else on the question on Mr. Schuster's motion?
So my, my last thing is, you know, we, we have a solicitor right now that worked on the legislation back in 2015. So Solicitor, Solicitor Esker is a good source for that. I just want to be reassured that we're not going to enter into the same territory that, to put the city at risk for another suit. So that's, that's my only concern. And like I said, it's something I, I could agree with this legislation. It's just I don't want to, you know, go against it for procedural issues.
Anyone else on the question on Mr. Schuster's motion to postpone? So all those in favor of postponing, moving this to seventh order for a final vote this evening? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So it's, it's, so it's all in favor of postponing this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so moved. So anyone else on the question on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved.
Six C, reading by title, file the council number thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note, series of two thousand twenty-three, in the principal amount not to exceed $5 million, providing for the dated date, interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment and place of payment in respect to the note, accepting the proposal attached heretofore as exhibit B from the financial institution named therein for the purchase of the note, naming a sinking fund depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the note and certain other documents and certificates in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the note.
You've heard reading by title of item six C, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item six C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
Six D, reading by title, file the council number forty, two thousand twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the establishment of an other post-employment benefits plan and an Oped Trust.
You've heard reading by title of item six D, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item six D pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file the council number thirty-four, two thousand twenty-two, ratifying and approving the submission of the fee agreement for a temporary construction access agreement and easement for repair work to be performed on the Lackawanna Avenue Bridge.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number thirty-five, two thousand twenty-two, amending file the council number ninety-three, two thousand twenty-one, an ordinance as amended and titled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January two thousand twenty-two, to and including December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, by the adoption of the general city operating budget two thousand twenty-two, as amended, by transferring $41,079.32 from contingency account number as noted to civil service commission account number as noted to cover expenses.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, file the council number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-two, repealing certain permit, license, and fee agreements and amending certain other permit, license, and fee agreements.
What is the recommendation for the, of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-one, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing appointment of Krista Murray, sixteen-twenty-two, Roslin Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight-five-one-oh, as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority, replacing Thomas Galella, senior, whose term expired September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Murray's five-year term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-seven.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I've been talking about this for weeks. So just to get this straight again, right? The mayor has, is supposed to appoint at this position. After thirty days, it's our job. That's what we try to do. The person who, who was in the seat, Mr. Galella, he didn't resign, he sent a letter that he wanted to retain his seat. So this is a procedural policy issue, right? And my vote, no, I don't even know this young lady and I'm sure she, her qualifications are fantastic, but, you know, I'm all about policy and procedure. So we're not following policy and procedure on this, on this process. So I'll be voting no.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I will be voting no for the same reasons.
Anyone else on the question?
I'll, I'll be voting yes while I understand my colleague's point. There was, the mayor did have appointee that was going to be appointed within that thirty-day window. There was some expression from council as to whether or not that appointee would actually receive the votes necessary. So they then went out and found another candidate. And looking at her resume, it's extremely qualified to serve on the housing board. So that's why I'll be voting yes.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I agree that this is a highly qualified candidate. I have no issues with this candidate serving and, and being appointed to the housing authority board. So I'm, I'm in agreement to vote yes.
Anyone else on the question? Roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven D legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven E, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-three, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the allocation of $2 million of funds from the workers' compensation reserve account to the other post-employment benefits trust.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven E.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven E legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven F, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-four, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement between the city of Scranton and Fidelity Deposit and Bank for custodial service for other post-employment benefits plan and an Oped Trust.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item seven F.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven F legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven G, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-five, two thousand twenty-two, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the PennDOT Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $2 million to be used towards the Pittston Avenue Infrastructure Streetscape Project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven G.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven G legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven H, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-six, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept on behalf of the city of Scranton Fire Department, a grant from Pennsylvania America Water Firefighting Support Grant in the amount of $1,000.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item seven H.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven H legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven I, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number one sixty-seven, two thousand twenty-two, authorizing appointment of Michael Villa, seven-oh-three, Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one eight-five-oh-five, as a member of the Human Relations Commission, replacing Teresa Osborne, who resigned November second, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Villa will fill the unexpired seat that will expire February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-six.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven I.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven I legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven J, formerly six A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file the council number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-two, enacting the rental ordinance of two thousand twenty-two by repealing and replacing the city's rental property code.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven J.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Nope.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven J legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven K, formerly six B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, file the council number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-two, amending the contractor licensing requirements and related provisions.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven K.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven K legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven M, previously tabled, file the council number thirty-three, two thousand twenty-two, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January two thousand twenty-three, to and including December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year two thousand twenty-three.
I'd like to make a motion to amend item seven M as follows. Under revenue, amend account number one hundred three zero one zero zero, three zero one zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, real estate tax improvements to decrease the dollar amount from thirteen million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars to thirteen million, five hundred eighty-four, thirteen million, five hundred, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars for a reduction of one hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars. Two, to amend account number one hundred three zero five three zero, three zero one zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, real estate tax, land to decrease the dollar, to, to decrease the dollar amount from nineteen million, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, eighty-five dollars to nineteen million, six hundred ninety thousand, forty-five dollars, for, for a reduction of one hundred ninety-three thousand, forty dollars. Number three, amend account one hundred three oh, three zero two one zero, three zero two zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, refuge, delinquent, to increase the amount from one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents for an increase of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Number four, amend account number one hundred, three nine, three three three, three nine two zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, inter-fund transfers, transfers ARPA lost revenue from two million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars to two million, four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents for an increase of eighty-five thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy cents. Under expenditures, number five, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one one zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, office of the mayor, standard salary decre, to decrease the dollar amount from one hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for a reduction of two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents. Number six, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one one one, one seven one, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, Bureau of Police, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from eleven million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents to eleven million, four hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for a total reduction of three thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Number seven, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one one one, one seven eight, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, Bureau of Fire, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from ten million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents to ten, ten million, nine hundred nine thousand, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for a total reduction of fifty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. Number eight, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one two zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, office of the cer, city clerk, standard salary to increase the dollar amount from two hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents to two hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents for an increase of eight hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one three zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, city controller, standard salary to de, decrease the dollar amount from two hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents to two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents for a reduction of one thousand, ninety-five dollars and forty-three cents. Number ten, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one four zero, one four zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, business administration, standard salary decrease the dollar amount from five hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents to five hundred two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-one cents for a reduction of ten thousand dollars. Amend account number one hundred forty-four zero four zero, one four zero, one four zero, zero zero zero, zero zero zero, business administration, other salary to decrease the dollar amount from seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars and six cents to forty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for a reduction of twenty-six thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Number twelve, amend account number one hundred forty-four zero one zero, one four zero, one Number 12, amend account number 144-010-140-141-000, Human Resources, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $307,240.24 to $303,740.24, total reduction of $3,500. Number 13, amend account number 144-010-140-142-000, Information Technology, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $228,911.55 to $224,000, total reduction of $1,095.43. Number 14, amend account number 144-010-140-143-000, Treasury, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $152,381.97 to $141,381.97 for a total reduction of $11,000. Amend account number 144-010-151-151-000, Code Enforcement, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $998,66.76 to $969,146.50, total reduction of $28,920.26. Number 16, amend account number 144-010-160-000, Law Department, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $457,969.40 to $447,469.40 for a total reduction of $10,500. Number 17, amend account number 144-010-180-180-000, DPW Administration, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $281,019.43 to $264,019.43, total reduction of $17,000. Amend account number 144-010-180-183-000, DPW Highways, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $1,516,462.82 to $1,516,282.82 for a total reduction of $5,900. Amend account number 144-010-180-184-000, DPW Refuge, standard salary decrease the dollar amount from $2,376,453.40 to $2,370,253.40, total reduction of $6,200. Amend account number 144-010-180-185-000, DPW Garages, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $458,938.96 to $452,924, a total reduction of $6,1496. Number 21, amend account number 144-010-200-000, Parks and Recreation, standard salary to decrease the dollar amount from $647,285.38 to $628,925.91, total reduction of $18,359.47. And finally, number 22, amend account number 145-000-000, Non-Departmental Expenditures, ECTV to increase the dollar amount from $120,000 to $135,000 for an increase of $15,000.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying, or on the question, on the amendments?
I'll speak to this resolution after, on the question with the next piece.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend a final vote on Item 7M as amended.
Second.
On the question?
So on the question, I'd like to start with the fact that I was happy to see some of the 2023 budget proposals, including taxes raises and new positions have been downsized from the original administration proposal. So thank you to council. However, I don't feel like we've downsized these expenditures enough. At this point in the 2023 budget, I just see as a tax and spend proposal, the taxes being levied are enough to cover the new expenditures, which are increased salaries and new positions. The city has just converted to a new tax, which we have not attained the full potential of. We've only collected 20% to 30% of it, and we have collected bargaining agreements that have not been settled for over a year now, which will not only affect the 2023 budget, but also the 2022 budgets. And I don't feel that it's a time to expand City Hall when these issues have not been settled and we do not know the full financial impact. I stated before that I understand the reasoning and the theory behind smaller tax increments, and I can agree with these increases if they were to put the city on a more sound financial footing. However, at this time with this proposal, I do not see that this is the case. A portion of the revenue to cover added expenses this year comes from one-time ARP funds. The totals are over $85,000, and I would have liked to have seen council make up the difference without the use of this one-time funding, as it won't be sustained moving forward. This amount could have been achieved if council was to take a closer look and scrutinize several of the positions, as well as some of the salaries. When it comes to the jumps in the salaries, I would like, when it comes to jumps in the salaries, I would not say that there have been, that some of these actions increased the salaries with accordance of the possible workloads and titles. However, I do want to point out that council has been fair over the last two years. We've given percentage increases of 5% and 3% for a total of about eight, and these are for the positions that are on the smaller realm of increases, which in terms of other sectors of society, these are pretty good increases over the two-year period with inflation and some of the difficulties we've been having over the years. So with that being stated, I will be voting no to this piece of legislation.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, so do I appreciate the amount of work that the mayor and the department heads and they put into this budget? Of course I do. You have to prepare one every year. Do I appreciate the time and effort of my colleagues on council with the amendments? Of course I do. But from the beginning, I still have a problem with raising taxes to fund positions, new positions, and to fund above-average wages, even though they reduce, and I appreciate that. But we're still raising taxes to 2% to fund these new positions. We didn't get rid of most of them, or proposed to get rid of most of them, or these large salaries increases. Like Councilman Schuster said, we gave them decent raises the past two years. This will be a third with a decent raise, above average. And I just think that, you know, we just got out Act 47, barely, right? And we extended Act 47 for the payroll prep tax. We're not doing well with that collection, right? And also inflation, like I said in caucus, it's been the highest of 40 years. People are struggling, and with the potential three-plus tax increase block up the road being put on residents from the school district, this is a tough one. I just think that we should have, you know, been proposed with a budget that, you know, used some of the ARPA money that we got. We got it for revenue loss, and we're raising taxes instead. So with that said, of course I'm going to vote no, because my position hasn't changed in all of this.
Anyone else on the question?
I'd just like to add, I understand the concerns of my colleagues, I truly do. And the last thing that I want to do is have to raise taxes on citizens of the city. Fortunately, we did just come out of Act 47. One of the recommendations from PEL was to do some incremental tax increases. I know that the city has had a pass many years ago, where they went, at one time, there was about six years, we went and didn't raise taxes at all, and they did an increase for a year or two, and then they went another three or four years. And I believe that those were mistakes, which put us in the position that we're in now. I believe we did spend a lot of time in there. I didn't agree with a lot of the higher pay raises, and many of those were scaled back, and we worked with the council to try to develop parity in there and develop positions. Maybe they're not in line with some of our similar-sized cities, such as Lancaster, Leaven and Harrisburg, Easton, Redding, Bethlehem, Allentown. They're still not where those cities are, but I did agree that there needed to be some increases, and we needed to create some parity within the budget, at the same time maintain, you know, our levels of police officers and fire department to maintain protection for the city. And we did eliminate some of those, attempted to add some new positions, and we did eliminate several of those. And several of the new ones that were added should actually help to try to recoup some of the funding that we're losing there. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
On the question, I'd like to add my thoughts on the budget and the amendments as proposed. I, as you could tell, there were 22 amendments. We made significant changes and cuts to what was originally proposed to council in the budget. The past two budgets that I've been a part of and passing and voting on, I've always wanted to vote on a budget that I believe is fair and balanced and going to be fiscally responsible for the city, and I do believe that we've reached that with this budget proposal tonight. I do support increasing salary positions, but I also don't think that this budget is just about that. There's so much more inside this budget, so I think to just use salary increases and new positions to be added to equate that to the change in taxes is unfair. I think there's a lot more to it, and even if we cut those salary positions and increases down further, it still would not amount to what we would need to not increase taxes completely. I am glad that we were able to at least get it down from 3% to 2%. I also would prefer not to have to increase taxes. I'm glad that we didn't over the past two years while we were going through the pandemic and because of the effects that that was having on people. I understand now we are in a state of inflation. Everyone is feeling the effects of that inflation. Based on the department work sessions that we had, I am really appreciative of the presentations that were given to council and the questions that we had for those department heads and employees. But it's very clear that the city has an issue with retaining employees and attracting employees who want to work for the city, and this has largely been due to the salaries that we offer, many of which are significantly lower than other comparable cities, as my councilman also pointed out. And so I believe that the amendments are fair. As I mentioned, we did remove some of those newly added positions. We did make changes to the salary increases so that they're not as significant, but keeping in mind that these are market-based changes, so in comparison to what people are making in other cities of our size, as opposed to being merit-based or performance-based, which I believe those are very important for us to consider too, but that's not something that they're performing now with reviews, so that we could base things off of merit. So these are based on the positions themselves, not the people in those positions, or the absence of people in those positions. And I also appreciate what we did here with the amendments to make some of those positions, those director-level positions, more on the same level and in par with one another. I think that's all that I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on the question briefly, in terms of tax increases, this would only be the second time in the five budgets I voted for where we're increasing taxes. The first one was in 2020, where we only increased the land by, no, I'm sorry, yes, the land by 2.1%. This one is 2% for each. Ideally, you'd like to get into a rotation of doing 1% tax increases every year, because that's what the responsible thing to do is, because you don't want to get into a situation where you say, okay, we're not going to raise taxes for five years, and then in the sixth year, we're raising taxes 25%, 30%, because that's what you need to do to balance a budget. So I think it's, you know, I think we did as best as we can in terms of limiting the impact on taxpayers. And then just in terms of salaries, I know that, you know, we are severely underfunded. We underfund our director salaries by a lot. For example, if you compare us to Bethlehem, Erie, Lancaster, and Allentown, we're underfunding our Director of Public Works by about 98%. Our, just some other high numbers here, Parks Director by about 81%. Supervisors in DPW average about between 60 and 74%. The Business Administrator, 42%. The City Clerk, 30%. The Superintendent of Fire, 29%. Economic and Community Development by 65%. And there's more to that. So I think if we're going to get qualified people that are going to do the job, that it's not just giving it to your buddy because he needs a job, I think you really do have to start raising some of these salaries. And that's what we're going to do, because I think it's about providing a service, and providing the best service we possibly can for taxpayers' money. And that's why I'll be voting yes for this budget. Anyone else on the question? Roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7M as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order 8A, file the Council Number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It has been tabled to allow for additional input and any changes. At this point, since the city has not met its 30-day, it has not yet submitted the zoning for 30 days, this will be coming back up as the first of the year, and we'll have to go through the process again of three readings, also with a public hearing.
8B, file the Council Number 32, 2022.
This ordinance was taken from the table and moved to Seventh Order for a final vote this evening. 8B, what, no, I'm sorry, 8B was left on the table. It is the permit parking for Pine Street, and that will be reconsidered next week. Sorry, Ken, thank you.
8C, file the Council Number 33, 2022.
This ordinance was taken from the table and moved to Seventh Order for a final vote this evening.
8D, Resolution Number 158, 2022.
This resolution is the transfer of a restaurant liquor license, and it had been tabled until a public hearing was held this evening. It will be put It will be put back on next week's agenda for a final vote.
Mr. President, if I could just have a second before we adjourn. I didn't really take the opportunity during fifth order to thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment to the city and your many years on the Scranton School Board, along with City Council, and now having served as the president of City Council. And I appreciate, I, I've pretty much known you your whole life, and I'm proud of you, and I wish you well. I think you'll do a great job representing our area and the 113th in the legislature. So I really appreciate all that you've done for the city. I wish you well, and we will absolutely stay in touch because we're going to need you down in Harrisburg. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. King.
I would also like to add my gratitude to your service here on City Council, and it's been a pleasure to work alongside you here. And I wish you the best of luck in your, your career as a state representative.
Thank you.
So I'd like to also echo my, my colleagues' statements here. Good luck with the 113th and your new position in Harrisburg. You offered me some guidance back in the early days when I first transitioned onto the school board, and I will remember that. So thank you very much for your service to the city.
Thank you. Since tonight is my last meeting, I just want to take just a few moments to share some parting thoughts. Really has been an honor and a privilege to serve on this body for the past five years, especially as council president for the last 11 months. Over the last five years, we've gone from indictments and resignations to multiple appointments then through COVID. So the last five years have not necessarily been easy, to say the least. But we did get through it together as a city. And I truly do believe that this city is in a better position to succeed in the future than it was just five years ago. We have a revised ethics code and an ethics board to hold our public officials accountable. We have had balanced budgets that have emphasized modern, modernizing city government while limiting the burden placed on taxpayers. We have replaced the outdated business privilege or mercantile tax with a more modern payroll prep tax. We have significantly improved the city's credit rating, and we finally shed the distressed status under Act 47 that had hung over our, that had hung over our heads for the last 30 years. We have invested in infrastructure and will continue to do so in the coming years through ARPA and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. The stage is set for a regional stormwater authority to start finally addressing water runoff issues on a regional level. We're finally beginning to address quality of life issues by building a case so we can actually hold irresponsible property owners accountable. This will be a long process, can't happen overnight. But the foundation, I do believe, has been set and put in place that we can continue to build on. I'm often asked, you know, how do you do it? How do you, how do you come to, how do you sit on council? Deal with the people that come to meetings and whatnot? And, you know, all those, these meetings can sometimes be painful to sit through. This is a forum where residents can express their concerns and/or displeasure with city government in a public manner. And on top of that, these meetings, although weekly, only take up about 10% of the time of what we actually spend in this role. It is extremely fulfilling to help residents deal with quality of, whether it's quality of life issues in their neighborhood, to help someone get their street paved or even patched, or to just simply answer a question. Being in a position to help someone through an issue is the most gratifying part of this job. And I look forward to be able to continue to help people through any issues they have as I transition into my new role. My door will always continues, my, my door will continue to always be open. I'm hoping to have a district office up and running by the first couple of weeks of January. That office will be located at 1135 Music Street in a space that was formerly occupied by Spotless Cleaners. As for my new role, one of my many priorities I have in Harrisburg is to take my experience I have, I've gained here and to bring a unique perspective, to allow cities to improve on and to, to not only improve on, but add to the tools they have in their toolbox, especially as it relates to cities with high percentage of nonprofits. I also must take this time to thank the City Clerk, Frank Foldenberg, for the great work you've done and how helpful you are to all of us up here. And also, I would like to take a minute to thank Frank's predecessor, Lori Reed, who did a tremendous job as City Clerk also. And also the front office, Kathy and Allison. You guys are rock stars. You're helpful whenever we need it, and so just thank you. City Solicitor Sean Gallagher, thank you for your advice over the last 11 months. And also just want to thank our previous solicitors, Kevin Hayes and Amo Menora. And most importantly, you know, I also want to thank my colleagues up here. It's not easy to sit up here. I think it takes a lot of courage to sit up here because we, we're all up here to make this city a better place. And I think whether we disagree on some issues or not, we're always respectful, and we're, we all are here for the right reasons. Now, most importantly, I have to thank my family, and especially my wife, Mary Kate. None of us would able to be, sit up here without the support of our families. And I have a wife who's a complete superwoman, so I wouldn't be able to do any, any of what I do without her. So I really, the last thanks is just for her. And then thank you all so much for your interest in the city and by coming here week after week. It is appreciated. And that's all I have for this evening. So if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.